Welcome to Thomasville City School Board Work Session to talk over the twenty twenty-three school budget. It's now five P M and we'll call this meeting to order and we'll hand it over to Ms. Jellicle.
Good, um, good evening, everyone. Tonight we will do the proposed budget for this year twenty twenty-three.
Can you see that?
Not real well, but.
We got Christopher to follow. That's better.
Okay. Okay, so the, um, this presentation is presented to aid the communications of the financial information to the general public and to solicit input into the budgeting process for the public education at Thomasville City Schools. And I have budget input forms on the back, um, tables if anybody need, um, want to write anything, have an input. The budgeting process is designed to develop for the school system a tool in order to provide an overall plan for the, um, use of financial resources that will best serve the needs of the current student body and to encourage the concept of site-based management. So, um, we are required to hold at least two public hearings of the bu- um, budget and it shall be held, um, during board meetings at a time and place that's convenient for the public. And the second meeting will be on September thirteenth at the, um, five P M. And we must give a notice and provide the budget reports. Um, also should be required in the budget reports are the P one and P two forms and those forms are the total resources available to the L D A from all funding and revenue sources, the total proposed expenditure by school in total, by school and for the total of L D A. Proposed expenditure by category, um, or function, operating resources earned by the school for the fin- um, for the foundation program. The projected enrollment. And the staffing is, is gonna be broken down. The mission. Statement is to, um, to provide adequate learning opportunities in which all students will gain knowledge and ignite curiosity in our ever-changing world. The vision statement is to provide, is by providing the best education possible, the Thomasville City School System empowers students to become caring, competent, responsible citizens who will value education as a lifelong process. The lease. Is learn, um, learning is the chief priority for our schools. Education is a partnership involving the home, the community, and our school. Literacy skills are fundamental to student success. Individualized education promotes a lifelong desire to learn. Consistently enforced discipline promotes a safe and positive learning environment. The budgeting process normally begins in September, um, begins in the spring of each year with the school and department staffing, um, staffing meeting, each principal and the department heads meets with the team, um, team of district administrators to collaborate, collaboratively determine staffing for the upcoming school year. Principals and department heads submit requests for non-payroll expenditures for their school area. Budgets for federal programs are completed with the principals during the summer as funding information becomes available. Budget objectives, um, fund and protect the classroom, control expenses, essential budget request only, justify requests, plan for possible reduction in funds, essential budget request only, justify requests, and maintain cash reserve. What is the foundation program? The foundation program, um, is to ensure educational opportunity for each school district. Every student in Alabama has an adequate education opportunity. It requires a level of local tax support for each school district. State funds are distributed in an, uh, equitable manner, ability to pay. The foundation program is the state funding mechanism for K twelve students districts in Alabama. The program provides a funding formula for allocated, allocation of funds for teacher units. Instructional support units, which includes principals, assistant principals, counselors, and librarians. O C E, which is, um, support personnel, which is aides, custodian. C S I funds, uh, which is textbooks, instructional supplies, professional development, and technology. Additionally, our school districts are required to contribute a local effort equivalent to the value of ten meals of local district property tax for its share of the cost of the foundation program. Foundation dollars are earned based on the average enrollment for the twenty day after, for the twenty days after Labor Day for the previous school year. Teacher units are earned by school, by grade, using the funding devices. For K through three, um, for every fourteen point twenty-five students, you get, earn one teacher. For four through six, for every twenty point four-three, you earn a teacher. Seven through eight is nineteen point seven and nine through twelve is seventeen point nine-five students. The state salary matrix is used to calculate the dollar allocation for earned teacher and certified staff units. Additional funds are earned for non-certified support units, O C E. Allocations also includes funds for classroom instructional support supplies. Um, the total state allocation is reduced by the value of ten meals of local district property tax. So the required match for foundation program, like local tax recipients of ten meals are equivalent at six, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. The required local, the required match for capital project funds is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. And it's a minimum of a hundred and eighty, um, school day term and it's a hundred percent of the salary scheme. Employee benefits. So the retirement tier one, um, the retirement rates changed for tier one, it changed to twelve point five-nine. For tier two, it changed to eleven point four-four percent. But social security stayed the same at six point two percent. Medicare stayed the same at one point forty-five percent. Unemployment compensation went down to point oh-one percent and medical insurance stayed the same at ninety-six hundred dollars. Employee benefits, leave allocations, um, personnel get, um, two sick personal days, I mean, two personal days from the state and five sick days, sick leave days. Federal entitlement programs, programs that are, that have guidelines and limitations on expenditures of the funds, which include, we get Title One, Title Two, I D A B, the U S D A Child Nutrition Program, um, Elsa one, two, and three, and most of the funds, most of these programs are used to supplement state and local revenue. They cannot be used to supplant. Local revenue sources include, um, local revenues, revenue sources is used to supplement the foundation program and that pays for additional teachers, enhanced curriculum programs, capital improvement, debt services, operations and maintenance, and administrative costs. And local revenue sources are property tax, sales tax, alcohol tax, and C D appropriation. Areas that cost the system additional dollars. So that where we pay extra would be locally funded teachers, special education, construction or renovation projects, board office staff, extended contracts, matching grant funds, and athletics. And this year, um, our local funds, we will be paying for three teachers, um, one teacher, one support, and four admin. That's because last year we had teacher stabilization money and it was for one year and it went away and they was paid part of those and so we had to transfer them to local funds. Um, two of the teachers were from the high, I think, two of the teachers of the elementary, the aide was from the, um, high school and one teacher was from the high school. Technology and technicians. Um, the one-on-one program, T S L, infrastructure, maintenance upgrades, technology integration specialists, technician, software maintenance and upgrade. And right now, Mr. Fullerton is applying for, um, um, a grant, I don't think, I don't know if it's a grant or if it's just, um, allocations for, and it'll be able to pay for one of our technicians that's provided by the state. At-reast program slash alt, um, alternative education and comeback academy, credit recovery, career ticket education program. The pre-K program, art, music, and drama. All costs of additional, additional local borrow funds. Athletics, um, cost additional money, um, building maintenance, building and grounds maintenance, building lease salary supplements, and a startup of the new sp- of any new sports programs, but we don't have any new things this year. And I think when we did a salary, um, supplement, a new supplement schedule and the increase was about twenty-five, roughly twenty-five thousand dollars more.
Just for cages?
It was for our supplements. Areas that cost additional local dollars, which would be school safety, which is surveillance, intercom, phone systems, school resource officer, implementation of state standards of professional development textbooks. General fund, this fund, um, government fund types. The first type is general fund. This fund type accounts for all physical resources of the school system except those required to be accounted for in another fund type. The primary operating functions of a local school system are performed in a general fund type. Special revenue, this fund type accounts for the proceeds of revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for specific purposes except those required to be accounted for in other predetermined fund types. Debt service, um, this fund type accounts for the accumulation of resources for the payment of general long-term debt, both principal and interest. Capital projects, this fund, um, is for financial resources used to acquire a construction, acquire or construct major capital facilities, up in those of proprietary and trust fund. Provisional expenditure trust funds accounts for financial assets held to trust and for some purposes where the trust fund is designed to provide stewardship over expenditure assets. Definitely, um, I think, Mr., I'm gonna send this to Mr. Hendrick so he can post it on the web site and then it'll take, website and then it'll take it to the budget presentation. So for the budget summary, the total revenues that we have, um, coming in will be fourteen million, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, eight, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Nine million, fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars would come from the state. Two million, three hundred and fifty thousand, ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents would come from federal. Three million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars would come from local and a hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars would come from others. Total expenditures is, um, sixteen million, six hundred and sixteen, six hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, instructional is gonna be seven million, one hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-eight thou- dollars. Instructional support will be three million, one hundred and five thousand, forty, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. Operation and maintenance will be one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Auxiliary is one million, six hundred, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. General administrative is one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred dollars. Capital outlay is one million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Debt is five hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Other expenditures, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So instructional is anything related to, um, instructions, you know, teaching, instructional support will be student support, instructional staff support, a school admin. Um, auxiliary service will be student transportation and food, um, C and P services. So sixty-one, um, of our revenue is coming from the state. Sixty-one percent, sixteen percent is coming from federal, twenty-two percent is coming from local, and other is one percent. General fund budget revenues, um, twenty-three coming from local, twenty-three percent and seventy-seven percent is coming from the state. Total budgeted expenditures, forty-three percent is instructional, um, nineteen percent is instructional support. Operation and maintenance is seven percent, auxiliary services ten percent, general administration is eight percent, capital outlay is seven percent, debt is three percent, and other expenditures is three percent. So seventy, seventy-two percent is directly related to student, um, to students. So instructional services, um, is activities dealing with the direct interaction between students and teachers, which is forty-three percent at seven million, one hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Instructional support services. Is services or activities to facilitate and enhance instruction, which is student support service, instructional staff support, school administration services, which is nineteen percent of the budget. Operation and maintenance services is activities concerned with keeping up the buildings, keeping the buildings open, comfortable, and safe to use and keeping the grounds, buildings, and the major of the equipment in effective working condition and sa- in a good state of repair. There's, um, security services, building services, ground services, equipment services, vehicle services, and that's seven percent of the budget. Auxiliary services that, um, are activities of service functioning in subsidiary capacity and lending assistance to educational process, which would be student transportation services and child nutrition. That's ten percent of the budget. General administrative services is activities involved with establishing and administering policies for operating the school system. Um, that includes Board of Education Services, General Board of Education Services, is executive administrative services, services, superintendent and area administrators, business support services, boost cooperation services, system-wide support services, information services, um, data processing, print, duplicating and publishing, central office services, communication and technology, other general, central staff support. And that's eight percent of the budget. Capital outlay, which is real property, this concerns with the acquiring of land and building, buildings, land and building improvements, building, addition and construction, um, engineering services, and that's seven percent of the budget. Debt service, long-term debt is, um, involved in servicing of long-term debts of school system, including payments of principal and interest. And that's three percent of the budget. Other expenditures is activities involving the operations of programs other than the normally, um, normal, normally considered day school, which could be, um, adult continuing education, adult ed, community ed, extended day preschool, non-public school programs, community service, and payments made on behalf of other schools, and that's three percent of the budget. Other fund uses is interfund operating, transfer out, and that's other outlays of funds that are not classified as extra expenditures but still require budgeting or accounting control. Transactions with withdrawal money from one's fund source and place it into another. And that's four hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So I have, um, listed the state revenues that we received and the differences that from this year, from, from last year to this year. And, um, we got an increase in most all of the revenues itself, um, P S L capital outlay, which was a decre- um, decrease in three hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, this is the system A D M change from twenty-two, um, F Y twenty-two to F Y twenty-three. We had a decrease in students by twenty-six point two pers- um, twenty-six point two students. Um, the teacher allocation went down point nine teachers and everything else stayed the same. And it's eight point nine, but like some, the high school lost a unit while the elementary school gained a unit.
Did we, uh, did we use all I U's at the middle school or you had, I know because of that.
Yes, and that stabilization money caused us to be too over.
Yeah.
It was only there for a year.
Um, but you think we saw that coming from middle school, right?
Yes.
Local funds, um, ten-year match. Um, the foundation program, it increased eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and the capital purchase increased eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six. So the state provided us with six million, nine hundred and eighty-three thou- dollars and six hundred and twenty-four dollars and the local match was six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, bringing us to a total of seven million, six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Federal revenues. We had a decrease in the I D A Part B of six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars while all the other, um, funds got a slight increase with Title Four, we had a decrease of two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
What was that?
I don't know, I'm not sure how they do their calculations at the state for federal funds. They calculated and just allocated to us.
What's in Title Four?
Title Four is mostly, um, I'm not sure, but I hate to say, because I'm, I'm not sure, but I'll let you know.
An idea of what being, what is it?
That's, um, especially. It's for our rule. Um, or homeless. Not homeless. I, I'm not sure what it is. I hate to say wrong, wrong thing. I would be too bad. Um, we also received Elsa funds in response to COVID, um, Elsa one, two, and three. Elsa one allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars has been expended completely. Um, Elsa two of one million, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Most of it has been, it's, um, it will be spent September thirtieth with salaries, but we have remaining forty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars in the state reserve for, um, Elsa two. But it can only be used, um, for formative assessments, grade four through eight math and reading, and P D for, um, staff and math and reading. And that's all that's left in Elsa two. And it has to be expended by, um, September of twenty-three. In Elsa three, um, we have only expended five hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we have me and Ms. Morris and Ms. Cafum has been working together. We're gonna amend the, um, the budget for the Elsa dollars. But currently, we have the assistant principals being paid out of Elsa three and also a, a class hours reduction teacher at the elementary school and aide at the elementary school right now. But we're gonna, um, a lot of money hasn't been allocated for, um, after-school and some programs that they hadn't been using. So we're gonna try to read our recitals and send it better use. And that money has to be spent by, um, September of twenty-four.
So we have after-school program that is administered.
Well, it's supposed to be our schools, but I don't think anybody can stay in. They didn't stay last year and I don't know have they been staying yet?
Well, we had it in the fall. We had a big, we had a big, um, after-school tutoring in the fall. And it stops at Christmas and we started back for second semester and we had a trouble, we had trouble funding the teachers. Remember, we just discussed maybe raising their pay.
But fall.
Well, it was okay as well.
I mean, that was last year.
That was last year. We had, we had a big, we had big numbers in the fall. And then when it stopped at Christmas and you have to reapply and start back over in January, we didn't, we couldn't, um, stack it. We had a need and we didn't have anybody to teach it.
Nobody wants to stay over.
Not for the amount of money we were paying.
That was a problem.
Big problem. Ms. Gibson did the math. I think after taxes, they were making seventeen dollars when you can make fifteen selling tickets at the football stadium. And not have to plan or teach kids. So we, we weren't paying them adequately.
What we need to go to?
We needed, we needed to go up.
That's what we've been discussing.
We've discussed and we've been calling around and seeing what, um.
It was pretty obvious that they found it out that second.
And they also, I mean, they talked to other teachers in surrounding schools and they know what they were making elsewhere. So. So that's what we're gonna, we're gonna try that, see if we can get it stacked.
I mean, I'll start that in spring.
It's an hour. Well, we, we would start in October. We started October one if we can get their pay right. It's just an hour.
Oh, just out.
We paid them for an hour and a half because they got to prep and plan.
But they don't stay, I think they'll get paid.
We do too. We gotta make it worth their time.
A lot of teachers don't wanna stay.
Yeah, they do.
You know. Got some that's, that's willing to stay regardless, whether you get paid or not, but you got some that wanna get paid and I don't like.
To me either.
So this is the anticipated, um, local revenues from tax. County tax, um, one million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, district tax revenue, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars.
By district, I mean city.
Yes, ma'am. This here. And these are just a rough estimate. Um, it's supposed to be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I just put five hundred because we had received the, uh, last payment, but, um, we spoke with last payment in September. The budget summary, the beginning fund balance, um. projected for ten-one twenty-two will be one million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, operating revenues and other, um, sources will be eleven million three hundred and ninety-four dollars, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Operating expenses and other uses, twelve million two hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-five cents, which will mean we are operating at a negative eight hundred and eighteen, eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. So the projected ending fund balance for September of twenty-three will be one million one hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And that will have our projected one-month expenses at one point zero two million dollars. So we will still have the, um, one-month reserve.
That's kind of way down, ain't it?
Way down.
Way down.
We was almost at three at one time.
Um, I don't, it's because we have all those teachers in local and, um, this is gonna be on the other page, but. This year we paying eight point five personnel out of local, last year we were on two point five. And so that's kind of evening it up, because we got too many teachers.
Don't eat it up too much, we need to keep that reserved.
Yeah. So me and Ms., um, Morris was talking and, um, it's not gonna be as much because it is, this includes Mr. Ma's salary, but we'll have to stop paying him in December. But it, it calculates it for the whole year we put in the computer and then it would also.
And Angelica's also, remember, the elementary school has two class hour reduction teachers. They're only using one, so we're gonna move one to that.
Yeah.
But she had to do it based on like current before she makes all those moves. It was several other things.
And also, um, oh, and then this also has four administrator and that's projected if we hire a third, Ms., um, Morris wanted to hire a third person, but now she's considering just doing it.
Two.
That I had already in the presentation, um, she was gonna split the jobs between the curriculum and the vet and special, um, specialty.
I revamped the two positions and said, I wanted the repositions, but when I saw the budget numbers, I said, we can't do that. So I took it and I, when Ms. Gillis, um, resigned, I took her duties and I split it out and I gave some to special ed and some to federal programs and I split those two big jobs. So it'll still be two jobs and she budgeted for three.
Yeah.
So, so the number should be better next year.
Yes, so after we make those changes, it should, you know, it should go back up.
So when do we start seeing that improvement with the changes?
Uh, well, for the Elsa two, we can move people Elsa two, I think the, um, we can amend that budget beginning in, I don't know if it's October or November, the, um, for the new year, but we still operate on last year. And we'll move the teacher into, um, their class hour reduction. So they'll take one teacher out of local and then in December, the semester come out.
And, and, and one of the assistants will go on.
Well, I got him in, um, state anyway. I didn't put her in local.
Oh, that's right, you got a place, I'm sorry.
And the council, we always pay for the council and local, have a council. And the aide, we're gonna try to work around and see where we can place them. See if we can add them in Elsa if they approve it, when we add the changes.
How long does that last? Couple years?
Just to twenty-four, so next year, I mean, we have to put people, somebody, you know.
And these people that were hired with Elsa funds were told that they're not tenured. They're not gonna gain tenure because the money runs out, so they know who they are.
Is this a class reduction?
No, no.
No.
Anything paid with Elsa funds, because they go away.
Yeah.
When money runs out.
Then that position is gone.
Jobs.
Yeah.
But then you're going into it with Elsa funds.
Yes. Everybody in the state of Alabama's in the same boat, we just had a meeting about it last Thursday.
And they are expecting to get done once we change some of those, um, things that me and Ms. Morris talked about after we leave the budget and start the numbers. So for all fund amounts, they were just, um, those were general fund and this one is for all, this includes federal, all fund. And the beginning balance of this was two million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Um, and it's the operating at a negative of five hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. But it'll still be in the positive next year. Um, local school summary, this is, um, money's collected at the schools. Um, their revenue is projected to be four hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and their expenses are four hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three. And non-public funds, two hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and expenditure expenses is one hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-one. Project enrollment for high, um, elementary high school is three nineteen. The middle school is two sixty-five, the elementary is four sixty-eight. A total enrollment of one thousand fifty-two, fifty-two students. And this is the chart I was looking at when I was telling you, um, who was paid out of it. Any of that, you also have it, I think it's on the tab seven, is broken down by school, so you can have a better. You have any questions about that chart? This is just, um, showing the degrees, um, five percent have a six-year degree, six, four percent of certified staff has a master's degree and thirty-one percent have a bachelor's degree. So with advanced degrees, it's six to nine percent of staff. And that's the end of my presentation. If I have any questions?
Any questions? Any orders? Let's pray that we, uh, that, uh, I'll phone in the back door. Hey, that we used to be.
Is that projected enrollment, what, about what we have now or is that?
Yeah, I just took the tenants', um, one that last week and I just used that for projected.
I thought it was about to say.
It was drastic.
No, because we had that middle school classic, it was coming through and the new is gonna be.
Small.
Yes. Right here, page fifty-four. Slide fifty-four.
Last year, um, enrollment, one thousand and sixty-four, point four. And then this year it was one thousand thirty-eight point two, so it was a hundred and twenty-six.
Okay, but we're projected to be a thousand fifty-five, is that right?
Yeah, this is what the state sent out from the twenty-day, um, Elsa Labor Day count of last year. But the projected that I used is what was, um, present, that's what we had in attendance last week, or two weeks ago. No, I did this. So this is what, I just projected for twenty-three.
So you got me on mass out on attendance, so we got me.
He's bringing this report tomorrow. Not us, but the principals. He's bringing, and then the one that counts is the one that starts today.
Yeah.
Twenty days after Labor Day.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I just wanted to make sure everybody can scroll down.
Beginning of year, you're right.
Who knows twenty days at least?
You can go, you can go find no kids in the community.
I won't let you do that.
Any other questions from the board members? Any media questions? If not, um, given the, under the agenda, I will pause this meeting adjourned.